We have one, okay. I just to let, it looks like there's a Steven in the audience, just to let you know. We're going to be starting in just a few minutes. Okay, just sorry about the delay. Liz, just to let you know too, we're just starting a couple of minutes later, we're waiting for one more person. Okay, we can start if everyone is ready. Steve, do you need a couple of minutes to get organized?
Yes, if you don't mind, thanks.
Sure, I'll pull the agenda up, so we can all just refresh ourselves here. No, that is not the agenda. That is something else.
That looked top secret.
Not really, no. Nothing to see here.
I'm looking for the agenda right now.
Yeah, I have it up on one of my browsers and I can't find the browser.
Also in Brian's email. Steve, if you can't find it, it was in the email that came.
Yeah. Much easier to do this on my bigger screen than it is.
I found it, okay.
You got it?
Have it, thanks. The Plenary Commission, it's an order, October 13th. And the time is 6:14, let's have a roll call.
Certainly, Mr. Backsendale.
President.
Ms. Langgallis.
Here.
Mr. Muschak.
Here, and I want to extend, I think for everyone, our condolences for the loss of your uncle, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that.
Ms. Shockley.
Here.
And Mr. Ferguson.
Here.
Okay, we are good to go.
So we have discussion or action on applications, a special appropriation for DPW, Rowington Avenue over Keeler Bridge, Keeler Brook Bridge Replacement Project Report and Recommended Action.
I believe we have Vanessa Valadarez from DPW.
Yes, and also Anthony Carr is here with me, so good evening, everyone. So, as you are aware, during the Elsa storm, we had a problem with the Rowington Avenue Bridge. The bridge ended up being structural, not functioning anymore, so we had to close that road. That bridge wasn't in our forecast for replacement in the near future. We do inspections of bridges that are less than a 20 feet span. And that one didn't show as one of the most critical ones. So in our capital request, we have the budget to replace a few others. And that one would show in a couple of years after. But unfortunately, with Elsa, the amount of water that we got under the bridge, it really affect the arch structure. So with that, we had some kind of settlement from the bottom of the bridge that shows on the pavement some holes. So what we did in that morning, we closed the bridge, we asked for our structure engineer to come over, he evaluated, and then we had to close the bridge and now we have to replace. So what we are asking is for $650,000, so we keep on a special relocation, so we can use the money to replace the bridge.
Any, any discussion or questions?
Hi, oh, go ahead, Tammy.
Quick question, hi Vanessa, do you plan on using the money for this bridge, is that going to take away from one of the other projects, or is this in addition to?
It is in addition to, Tammy. We don't want to like, we still have, our thoughts are, imagine the ones that are on the top of the list, right? So we still need to take care of those, that we still have the money funded for this year. We're finalizing the design, and we are probably putting that out to bed during the winter. And that is the money that we already have allocated from the last capital year and this year. Now, this one is extra, so that's why we need to do the special appropriation.
Okay, thank you.
A quick question, and it really doesn't matter, you know, I'm going to support this, I think everybody is, it's obvious. A bridge is falling down, but do you know what year that bridge was built? Because I saw that stone structure and it looked ancient.
It is very old, Mike, I really knew the date, but it just blanked me. I would say it is at least over 50 years, if not 70. I, I unfortunately don't have the dates in front of me, but it's very odd. What is very particularly about that bridge is that I believe that it was half the size when it was built originally, because the covered underneath, it's two different structures. So you have the arch, and then you have something very different on the other side, meaning the width of the road. And the arch is the part that collapsed, that probably is the original one.
Thanks, I was just curious.
Okay, what would be the impacts if this bridge is not fixed?
Well, we already have the impact, because we had to close that road and we are detouring through the neighborhood.
Is there any opportunity of widening it by four feet?
No, and I'll tell you why. This is for two reasons. The first one is that for permit purpose, we are trying to replace as in kind, as an emergency repair, to try to minimize the permits required to do that work. We already went in front of conservation and we got that permit. For that, we are still waiting for deep and army core. Also, in case we need to do a bigger bridge with a bigger span, we have to do a whole hydraulic study upstream and downstream. So if we allow more water to go through, there's a chance that we can flood downstream properties. So what are we going to do, we're going to just replace in kind, just put it back what was there, pretty much in size. And, and try to keep a little bit of that stone look with some form liner. Maybe in the long term, we will consider a different bridge after analyzing the whole hydraulics. That would probably cost close to $2 million, and that is probably 5, 10 years from now that we would be doing that.
I see.
Steve, were you thinking about that in terms of the potential for a sidewalk or bike path along Rowington Avenue there?
Not for now, Tammy, maybe in the future, we don't have room, we're going to just replace exactly what we lost.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking the same thing.
Right, that's what I thought, Steve, yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's an opportunity to just make it a little wider.
Unfortunately, it triggers a very different permits. And then that bridge will probably be closed for a good extra year. So and that's what we're trying to avoid, we want to try to come with a midterm solution that we can replace soon, and then eventually working a long-term solution.
And just, I want to add, the, that all makes sense, and then they have prefab pedestrian bridges. If it ever came to that, which can, you know, I don't know what the right of way is there, but usually the right of way is generous enough to put a, you know, basically crane a bridge in onto new footings on the side that would carry bikes and pedestrians, if, you know, if it came to that. It certainly would be good to have that access through there, but I, you explained it very well.
So, so the only thing, this was called the tropical storm Elsa, so we can't get FEMA, because it's not, it was not deemed as damage from a hurricane, correct?
Actually, Mr. Ferguson, we ended up as the city, we put a claim, not a claim, but we put the bridge as one of the property damage that we got, that, but to get FEMA, we only going to know if we're going to meet the threshold in a few weeks. So if in the future that money becomes available, we're going to get, be reimbursed. But we need the money now, so we can move forward and do the replacement. But yes, we put that in for the application in case we are, will benefit for that funding.
Okay, thank you, so are, are we prepared to make a vote now, should we wait till the end?
I'm ready now.
All right.
I'm ready.
I have the memo dated October 7th, I would like to let it be resolved, so the Norwalk Department of Public Works is requesting that the Plenary Commission review and provide a report for the special appropriation request for the city to allocate $650,000. That number is still the same, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, for the repair of the Rowington Avenue Bridge over Keeler Brook. Therefore, let it be resolved by the Norwalk Plenary Commission that special appropriation DPW on Rowington Avenue over Keeler Brook Bridge Replacement Project be approved, as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Second?
Second.
Tammy seconded? All in favor, or was it aye, okay, just want to make sure, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next on the agenda is B, 824 referral 09-2021 with WPCA for 174 to 176 Bowden Street. Sanitary Sewer Extension Report and Recommended Action. And Anthony, are you going to go over that one, Anthony?
I can do whatever you prefer.
Sorry, no, I was waiting, I thought, I thought you were going to make a motion or do something different, I'm sorry.
No, no, we want to just go over it, we already have the memos already, but, you know, we're looking at some maps here for the materials that we've received. So you want to just highlight Vanessa?
Yeah, so, so what happened is that now we changed the guidelines from WPCA, so all the time that there is an extension to the, to the sewer, usually that is, it starts as a private investment to the infrastructure. They, they needed WPCA board approval that they did, then they come to DPW for approval, and then because of day 24, it comes in front of you. So both items, it's the same reason that they follow that process. So one is for Bowden Street and the other is for West Rocks. So the staff, the WPCA staff as well as engineering staff has already reviewed the plans and approved, and then we recommend to the WPCA board for approval. That process also happened, and there was a public hearing for the WPCA. No one commented during the public hearing for those two projects. Then we went to DPW Committee for Approval, and now we are in front of you. So Bowden Street, we are just connecting, the developer is proposing to connect five parcels to the sewer, so they're going to extend the private sewer. And then after that, the city will take ownership and become public. If you want, Steve, I can go through the second item and explain what is, because they are very similar.
Please.
So the second one is for the West Rocks Church, the Greek Church on West Rocks. I don't know if you guys remember, you approved the renovation and expansion of that church. And the approval for the sewer was also approved a long time ago by planning. But again, because it is a private sewer that eventually would have to be turned to the city, it has to go through the same process, that it didn't happen in the past. So again, we went in, they did application, staff, WPCA and engineer review. We went in front of the WPCA board, they went for a public hearing, no comments. The WPCA approved, and now went to DPW committee, and now is in front of you. That part, that extension will go in front of 15 parcels as well. As part of this new guideline that WPCA developed with engineering, the properties that are adjacent to the new proposed sewer are being notified, so they will have the option to connect to that sewer during construction if they would like to. So we made that process very clear, so the applicant has to, as soon as they start the process, they must notify the adjacent properties that they are proposing a new sewer. And after that it gets approved, all they will have to notify them that they have the opportunity to connect. When we review the drawings, we make sure that they leave the stamp for the lateral connections in place. So even years from now, if one of those septic systems from one of those houses fail, there is already the connection ready for connection to the system. On Bowton, that will not going to apply, because all the properties along and adjacent to the proposed sewer is already connected to a sewer line, but on West Rocks, they are not. So there are about 15 parcels that can probably benefit in the future for that extension.
I see, so when it comes to, back to Bowden Street, because we're talking about that one. The work that's there, adjacent to those properties going up Robin Square, taking the left up to Bowden. The work will start before Robin Square, or after Robin Square, right? How far up from Robin Square, I'm looking, I'm trying to get a, I'm looking at the map here, I see the five parcels here, but I'm determining how.
It's a very small location, Steve, it's pretty much, there is a radius where that is pretty much running at the end of the street, so if you look at the map, it's only those five properties that will be connected to a manhole that is kind of closer to the street. So only those five properties will be affected, the new ones that are being proposed. It's one parcel, and then it will become, will be developing to five new parcels there.
Well, the only question I have for that is the, the added use of sewage going towards Robin, because that's where it goes down, Robin down Bowden, correct? That want to impact those homes there, because there was always sewage issues at the bottom of Bowden Street, that's all been rectified already, so this would be an easy flow of just connecting five new parcels.
Yes, so as I told you, WPCA and engineering staff have to review the plans, and one of the things that WPCA has to do is to see if there is capacity on those pipes. If there is no capacity, the applicant is required to upgrade that. I'll give you another example, when that happened was for instance on Glover Avenue. On Glover Avenue, when the development for the Al came, the existing pipe couldn't support the new capacity, and they had to upgrade the pipe, so that's what we look at.
Commissioners, do you have any questions regarding the Bowden Street or the West Rocks 824? Or concerns or comments, Mike?
Yeah, I'm just curious if property owners want to hook into, let's say, the St. George extension, because I believe the applicant is the church, they will pay for the pipe. Will they then share some of the cost, is it, to their churches' benefit to try to lobby other neighbors to try to get on? I mean, or is it solely the church that would pay for it, and then it would be taken over by the city once it's completed?
The main, the main infrastructure will be paid by the church, and it is up to the homeowner to connect. Now, how the church will deal with each parcel, we do not know, this will be between both of them. So probably, I think that the homeowner may be willing to pay to just run the lateral. At least I would, you know, I feel it's, at least I'll bring the lateral up to my, inside my lot. But all the structure up to the stump, it will be paid by the applicant.
Thanks, I think it's generally understood too, that houses on sewer lines are, have a higher property value. Tammy probably knows more about this than, than septic systems that are, you know, can fail and be hugely expensive, of course, you're paying a sewer fee now, but you, there's lots of failing septic systems around Norwalk, because of our shallow soils and bedrock that's not too far down. So, you know, I think this is a good idea.
All right, thank you, Tammy, Tamara, or Brian, you have any questions, comments, concerns?
I do, I have a question, thank you, Steve. When we approved the application for 174, 176 Bowden Street, I thought that, you know, the sanitary sewer installation was approved with that approval, and Vanessa, this is before tonight, so, you know, we approved that subdivision, and then.
I, I can answer that, because what we ended up doing is that, that is approval with the condition that the sewer gets approved. If the sewer does not get approved, they have to go back, revise their drawings, and install septic.
Okay, and you, and you also mentioned that those properties have private sewer, but by that you mean that they had a septic system?
No, I'm sorry, I probably said something wrong. So what, what I was trying to say is that all the properties adjacent to Bowden Street already are on sewer.
Oh, no, that I understood.
On public sewer, yes.
In the earlier part of what you were speaking, I, I understand that the.
You were talking about West Rocks, Tammy?
West Rocks, everyone is on septic there.
Yep, no, no, I get that, but you used the term private sewer.
Oh, it's that this line comes first as a private sewer extension, meaning the city is not doing the project. So it is a private sewer extension. After the sewer, after the installation is complete, and the city accept, will go back to the WPCA board to accept that as a public utility, so the city will take ownership. And that's the reason why you guys have to review the 24, because in the future, there is the chance that this will become public. Now, WPCA and engineering would like to make that public, because then we have maintenance over it. We prefer, particularly on West Rocks, we'd rather that we maintain, because if there is an issue on that line, will not be easy to maintain. And we can get our guys there right away, so, but they have, so in other words, they install, and then at the end, we take ownership.
So Vanessa, did I answer your question, Tammy, sorry?
Yes, thank you.
I have just one question regarding West Rocks, there's currently the road being reconstructed that stops a little bit after Esquire Road and West Rocks Middle School. Would this potential work halt, that work going towards Main Avenue and Bain?
And it goes to Main Avenue, so it is from the church all the way to Main. And we've just paved a west portion of West Rocks this past weekend, so if you guys drive by, you're going to see that two sections are paved. Yeah, so the bottom, and then let's say the, the, I'll call the, we divided the road pretty much in fourth. So the bottom is close to Cannon Street, that portion is paved. Then there is one stretch that is not, because First Water District has a project coming up in that area. Hopefully this coming year, after that will get paved, then we pave the third section. And then when it gets to the church, we did not pay, because we know the sewer has to come in. They are, as soon as this gets approved, they're trying to get the contractor, this work should be completed next year, and then we paved that portion up to Main.
And just to add, just to add Vanessa too, yeah, it's from Cannon Street to St. Mary's. We skipped, like Vanessa said, and then we paid from Creepingham Lock to Butter, I think it's Butter Nut? Yes, Butter Nut. And also too, just, I wanted to just touch on the testing and what we require, you know, before this gets to any boards, the sewer extensions, and like Vanessa said, at the staff review level, we do require the applicant to do full monitoring for anywhere from six to eight weeks. They are required to capture at least one storm, I believe it's at least a half an inch or greater in rainfall. But there needs to be at least one storm event of significant magnitude. And there's flexibility in that number, but it's just, it's just to monitor if there is inflow and infiltration into those sewer lines. And, and we also maintain a 40% reserve capacity, meaning if our pipe is flowing 60% full, and the engineer calculates that their proposed flow will take up more than 60% of the pipe, they're required to upgrade the sanitary sewer main, so if they have an existing 12-inch clay pipe, and we know that they're not going to have that 40% capacity, after they, after their new flow from the development, we'll require them to upsize to 16, 18, whatever the next size up is, where they could still be maintaining that 40% reserve. And that 40% reserve is for the presence of stormwater, groundwater, future development, so we do do that. And these sanitary sewer extension policies, the new policy was just adopted in July of this year by WPCA boards, that's why it's still a little bit new. But the overall, I guess, flow, if you want to call it, is WPCA DPW staff level review. Then it's recommended to the WPCA board, a public hearing is required. If it's going to be a public main, they have a public hearing, close the public hearing, and then at that public hearing, it's referred to Planning Commission for a 24 referral, Public Works Committee of the Common Council, then once they approve, then it's forwarded, and then ultimately the Common Council approves. And like Vanessa said, it's before your commission, because ultimately, we do want to take over the sewer mains. I've been, and other municipalities have been involved, and Vanessa is the same, has the same experience where, and even in Norwalk, some are private, sometimes there's easement, sometimes there's not, and, and, you know, when there's a, when there's a sanitary sewer overflow, if there is, trying to get in touch with somebody to stop and look for agreements, it's not practical or feasible, and the city ends up maintaining it anyway. So our approach is, if we're going to have to clean it up, we want control over it, and we want to make sure it's under our standards, which would be the case anyway, whether it's private or public. So once it's approved through that process, after it's constructed, it goes back to WPCA, and we issue a memorandum saying that the main was constructed in accordance with DPW standards and specifications. So they pressure test it, they do all different things to make sure that there's no leakage, and then we formally accept it. There would be very little situations, if any, where we don't accept a private sanitary sewer main eventually into a public main. It, my experience, you're asking for trouble, and it muddies up the waters when, when, when you have certain segments that are private. Our approach again in position is that it's a public service, if it's on a public road, why shouldn't we provide and take over and maintain and improve infrastructure that serves the city of Norwalk? So that was that, and Commissioner Musak, just to go back on the Rowington Avenue Bridge, the, the bridge was constructed in the early 1900s, and then it was reconstructed in 1966.
Thank you.
But that would.
Thank you.
So let's, so let's approve this, let's make a motion to approve it.
Steve, you have to take, probably take each one separately.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so I'm going to do the 174-176 Bowden Street first.
I make a motion.
Thanks, Mike, who would like to second that motion?
Second.
Tammy, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any object or sustain? Great, so moved. Let me go to the next one.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Anthony.
Good night.
Good night, Commissioner.
Okay, subject 824 referral, 10-21 WPCA, 238 West Rocks Road, Sanitary Sewer Extension. Who would like to make a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve, Tammy.
Tammy, and who would like to second that tomorrow?
Second.
Tomorrow, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? Great.
Thank you so much, have a good night.
Thank you, Vanessa, for your patience, thanks. D, zoning commission referral, 20-20, 2021-37R Oak Hills Park Authority, 165 Fellow Street or 1 Charles Marshall Drive, text amendment to remove full service from the restaurant used for Oak Hills Golf Course, report and recommended action. Steve, you want to go over this one, Steve?
Actually, the, the applicant, Mr. Avery, I think Attorney Avery, if I am correct, will be making presentation, I'm here for any questions you may have.
Good evening, Mr. Avery.
Yes, good evening, how are you, sir?
Good.
It's a pleasure to appear before you. I believe that the commission has Brian Baker's memorandum of October 7, 2021. It lays out in great detail why we're making this text change request. Just trying to give you a little bit of history, the Oak Hills authority is, is a recreational authority created by the city of Norwalk in 1997 to manage and operate Oak Hills Park, which is, as you know, a golf course, tennis, and nature trail facility. In the early 2000s, the city of Norwalk constructed a brand-new restaurant on the property. And initially, it was operated essentially as a catering facility. Subsequent to that time. Subsequent to that time, uh the economy failed for that kind of an operation. And so a much more user specific facility was uh was designed. This restaurant uh did not allow recently, I should say, initially formed the city wanted not to have a bar in this restaurant. It had a service bar, but no other type of bar. And in twenty nineteen, the city extended the authority's lease and in it uh permitted the erection of a bar in the restaurant. And so the the current manager of the authority uh went about designing and began to implement this bar when it was discovered that there's a specific to Oak Hills definition of a restaurant that would limit it to fifteen feet. And in discussions with Brian and others in the planning and zoning office, they conceived of the simplest revision, which which would affect only Oak Hills Park. And that is to remove words from a particular regulation, words to remove being full service. So instead of saying a a full service all season restaurant, it will say an all season restaurant. By doing that, uh this fifteen foot limitation goes away. And um so that is why we have made this uh text change request. Uh you know, the next step after your review would be uh would be a public hearing back at zoning where uh where there would then be public comment on this, on this request. So that's our application. And uh the existing conditions are very thoroughly described. And the way in which it supports the plan for the development of the city is also laid out uh in Brian's uh memo. I I imagine you have it, so I'm not gonna read it uh to save your time. So I'm just requesting the, on behalf of the Oak Hills Authority, that you uh engage and to make the resolution to approve that's in Brian's draft. Happy to answer your questions.
Does any commissioners have any questions about this?
This is Tamara. What is the difference between a full service and a all season restaurant? What will be the difference between the two if this is deleted?
Yeah, I would. So I can tell you that in the definition of a full service all season restaurant, there's a fifteen foot restriction to the size of a bar. Now, it turns out that there's only two places in Norwalk that this applies. Oak Hills Park under this particular regulation and a couple of structures in, on Washington Street, in the uh Washington Street District. So we didn't want to change the the restriction of fifteen feet to change what happens in Washington Street. But we did want to be able to make a longer bar than the fifteen feet limit that's in this definition. If you look at the definition of a full service all season restaurant, it says it can only be fifteen feet long. Every other restaurant in Norwalk does not have that fifteen foot limitation. And a fifteen foot bar in a golf course would accommodate about five or six people. And uh ordinarily, if, I don't know if you've been to the facility, ma'am, but the uh there's interior dining, there's exterior dining on a deck. And then uh there would be uh this bar service, which is what the public has been asking for for some time. And that's why um we obtained the permission of the city to erect a bar there.
So right now it is more than fifteen feet?
Yes, it was. Uh when the manager constructed this, he wasn't aware of the fifteen foot limitation. So it currently is longer. And uh that's why we're seeking this text change so that it can be operated and approved. Given permits.
Thank you. Uh Tammy's, uh Mike or or uh Ryan, uh any questions or thoughts on this?
None at all.
Okay, thank you. Uh Mike?
Uh I saw Tammy's hand. Go ahead, Tammy.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Good evening, Attorney Avery. Um in your opinion, if you can offer, if this is approved, will this really help Oak Hills Restaurant be solvent and sort of resolve this longstanding issue of a bar at Oak Hills? Cause I know I've been reading about it in the paper for years and it's always vexing to me like why this has been so problematic. Um if I recall correctly, you know, the neighbors originally didn't want a bar there. Um but if if this goes through, will this help Oak Hills, you know, be the functioning place that the Board of Directors there really want?
Well, this is clearly what the Oak Hills Park Authority believes. Uh and that's why they, uh the the authority has paid for the construction of this. So, and it's implemented with the uh design of of attracting people to stay on the property and use the restaurant. What um what has happened here is, uh as I said initially, when this restaurant was opened, there was a ten year lease with a large restaurant, a local restaurant uh family. And they were able to operate it and pay a pretty substantial rent of over seven thousand dollars a month. In order to do that, they need, they needed to be a catering hall. They needed to have weddings, uh special events. And in so doing, the facility was not as available to the general public using the park. And uh eventually the economy for that kind of business declined. And a series of subsequent operators could not pay even reduced rent. Uh and we had to, in one case, uh go through an eviction to remove them. And in another case, we uh we had agreements that lapsed. So yes, the the expectation is that the facility will be much more attractive to the people that are accustomed to staying on the property after a round of golf or after a game of tennis or after walking in the trails. Uh still, the vast majority of the space will, that's inside the building will be interior sit down dining. But a larger bar presents the opportunities for a few more televisions and kind of a normal after sporting facility that you would find at the public golf courses elsewhere in Connecticut. So the answer to your question is yes, that's what we hope for.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just uh feel that uh limiting bar length is just kind of ridiculous. Uh I was known to dance on bars at one time in my life. Fifteen feet was never enough. I'm all for the bigger bar and I'd like to sit at the end of the bar away from everybody some nights. And I'd like to be way up at the end of a bar, fifteen, I know that bar, when it was the prior one. And it was tiny and it was over shoved in a corner and it was always a, it was always ridiculous, uh I think.
That was a twelve foot bar, yes.
Yeah, and it was ridiculous for that space and for the crowds that it had. Uh so anyway, uh I, yeah, I support this.
Thank you. Um I personally um think that um expanding the use of that space will give more opportunity for people to have functions there and occasions. I don't know the full layout after the interior changes. Um but I I would say that um the current manager owner has restaurant experience and knowledge. Um and 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 hopefully there'll be a place that there'll be more events to have more traffic in that area um post COVID. So um let's go right into the the recommendation. For this referral to zoning, I would like to put it forward to be resolved at the Norwalk Planning Commission, at the zoning commission referral two zero two one dash thirty-seven R Oak Hills Park Authority at one sixty-five Fellow Street slash one Charles Marshall Drive, the text amendment to remove full service from the restaurant use for Oak Hills Golf Course be approved. Can I have a motion? Or second?
Make the motion.
Brian, Vaxendale seconds it. All in favor? Any opposed or abstain? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Avery.
And thank you.
That the zoning commission sees this and um they could move forward with this.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your time.
And I'd offer to come dance on the new bar, but I'm too old for that.
Very good.
Be with me one second, please. Okay, um E industrial zone study presentation.
You guys can see that, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Right, so um you, probably we've talked about this kind of like periodically at your uh um regular meetings, just to give you an update of progress and where things stand. Um Ms. Lingals has been serving on the Oversight Committee that's been looking at the industrial zones, which we started probably ten, twelve months ago now, around that timeframe. Um so the the draft report came out uh last month and we sent you guys a copy once that was out. So now we're kind of soliciting public comment. Uh presented this last week to the planning committee. I'll probably be presenting it to the zoning committee next week and then doing a little bit of outreach within some of the neighborhoods, probably targeting um South Norwalk more so because it's kind of the largest geography in the area and then maybe something up along uh certain parts of Maine Ave. Cause those, that that one's got a little bit of a change to it as well. So we're gonna try to reach out to some of the property owners in that area, but probably targeting more outreach towards um South Norwalk. Um just kind of like the big picture. Your takeaways from from the plan and the recommendations that came out of it, just um defining the types of industrial users, um including the types of contractor yards, because I think one issue specifically to the contractor yards is that the definition kind of lumps all of them together. So I think, you know, that the ones that people have the biggest issues with are typically a larger earth processing. Yards because of the um heavy truck traffic that's kind of coming in and out fairly constantly. The use of machines to, you know, load and mix up material, the dust that creates and the noise that comes off that. So that's kind of where the conflict comes in with the neighborhood. So we think defining them and separating them out from, say, somebody who's got a you know, a plumbing business and he's got three or four vans and he stores some conduit on the site, that's a lot less um intrusive in the neighborhood or when they're in proximity to residential areas. So we're trying to kind of separate those and allow each one of those to exist in different areas. As part of that process, we are also kind of recommending changes to the zoning map where those different uses can go. And that also includes, you know, industrial uses as well, not just, just, you know, solely focusing on contractor yards. Um and as part of the process and part of the rezoning, we're also looking at ways to incentivize other uses on the properties because it's kind of important to point out, and this question comes up um a lot, is when we rezone something. So if you're currently a contractor yard and you're operating there legally now, if we change the zoning to make you non-conforming, you can still operate in the future. You you're just restricted in terms of your expansion possibility. So you can continue to operate just as you are today. There's no um thought by the city to try to take your property or shut you down. It's just saying you're kind of frozen in time with the use that you have right now. If and when in the future you change to a conforming use, you can no longer go back to being that contractor yard. So we we've put some tools in place um in terms of allowing uh some additional ground floor height and reducing the parking in order to try to get some uses in there, which we feel would be better, less um intrusive on the neighborhood and hopefully are also job generating uses as well. Um I mentioned the contractor yards and I kind of another thing that came out of this uh exercise was, you know, the idea of city, you really need to take a hard look at what you require for your screening um and remedial measures when these uses are in proximity to residential areas so that any impacts that do occur because of them are let, are limited. So the the plan kind of classifies the industrial uses into four categories. You have a heavy industrial, kind of a mixed use, heavy industrial, commercial, and then a lighter version of that. And then we have something that's called a mixed use artisan. So these don't directly correlate to zoning designations, but they kind of provide the framework for where these zoning designation should be. Um obviously, the heavy industrial is where your I one zoning is now, and that's along Woodward Avenue and Wilson. If you think about like some of the bigger um like La Joy's, you have some big contractor yards in there um and some other uses that, you know, are oftentimes necessary for a city. But where they go and where they're allowed to go is something we wanted to uh wrap our hands around. And like the lighter end, you have the mixed use artisan, which is kind of what we allow right now and encourage in a lot of our commercial districts now where you can have like um like a brewery or a bakery that's operating on the ground floor. And then up above, you can have different uses, whether it's office or residential or something like that. The plan goes into also making recommendations on, you know, what uses go into these new zones. And then um whether there's overlap between the zones and if or where, if and when they should be controlled. So on the left, you're looking at the existing zoning map that's, you know, where any kind of industrial use or heavy commercial use is currently permitted in the city. Um and and then the, these are all the existing zoning classifications and and the legend on the left. Obviously, kind of, it kind of, you see the map, they runs the spine from the Route Seven Corridor down to the South Norwalk, the Route One Corridor and then somewhat along um East Norwalk area along the railroad tracks. The new map, um what it does is allow, you know, breaks down these classifications. And I'm gonna go into the zoning map in more detail, so we don't have to like focus on it now, but it kind of classifies where you can do different things. So you're, you're like, your light artisan areas are within your bit more business zones, like your central business district uh by the train station in South Norwalk. And then the heavy industrial is shrunk by quite a bit. And it's kind of footprint is down into South Norwalk area down where the heavy industry is concentrated right now. And then just a couple of other things to point out in this map, um this black outline you see here and these parcels that are in the white, that's the waterfront study area that we're just starting to look at now. So that was one of the conclusions that we came to in the plan. We originally wanted to look at that as part of the study, but there were so many complexities related to the water waterfront itself in terms of the water dependent uses, plus the um environmental factors that occur in and around the water. So we decided to take kind of a, kind of more in-depth look at that, which we're working on now. The other two items on here are the Norton Site, which, you know, the, it's kind of a special and unique area. Anybody kind of, excuse me, familiar with that based on, you know, the the recent applications and city scene? And the plan says you really need to be careful and take a look at this area by itself. The other one is Lakota Oaks, which is kind of, you know, it's kind of functions as a convention center. But if you're a neighbor up there, a lot of it seems like it's open space. So it's kind of been designated as an industrial zone by prior zoning. And so far, nobody's really come up with a good way to how to rezone it to kind of protect it as it is and keep it kind of like a special entity. So I don't know if I have a good answer for that beyond what I just stated.
If I could um ask about that Lakota Oaks property, why isn't it considered something like research and development? Like um Graham Capital is on Highland Avenue?
That that's what it currently is zone. We're not sure if that's the best designation for what it is. We, and at the end of the day, it may end up kind of staying there by itself, just in its own little zone, just because it's such an oddball piece of property and and unique piece of property.
Uh yeah, we wouldn't want to turn it into a a rock crushing yard.
No, 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 we definitely want to restrict what you can do there. And we'd also be leery about rezoning it solely to residential because then that opens the potential for subdivision and then, you know, then a lot of that kind of character of the area and, you know, the the openness and avail- availability of that parcel for the neighbors to walk and and kind of congregate on might go away. So that's something we're cognizant of as well.
Right. It wasn't a bunch of it already conservation land and it doesn't.
There may be some part of it that is conserved. There are a lot of wetlands and ponds within the, within the property.
Doesn't the land trust, the Norwalk Land Trust, have an interest in that property as well?
I don't know. I can check into that. I'm not positive.
Okay, thank you.
So does anyone else have any questions or comments about this? I think we're in the right direction, Steve, with this.
I got more if you want, or I could stop.
No, no, I mean, no, no, I mean, let's go over the points.
Sure. So I kind of alluded to this earlier that the consultants kind of based on their experience in other areas found that there's an issue, you know, if you want to encourage manufacturing, especially in like a mixed use environment and have that be viable and allow it on the ground floor, you need to have higher ceiling heights on the ground floor. For loading bay access for, you know, the manufacturing processes, the storage that occurs in those areas. So they recommend increasing the ground floor height, which, you know, obviously increases the overall height of the different buildings. And the idea being that the ground floor would be some kind of, you know, say it's manufacturing or some kind of flex space and the upper floors can range from office to support the ground floor could be independent office or could be residential. And if it is residential, we're recommending that it be at a low density. So the residential doesn't dominate and take over the property. But those other uses help to subsidize the cost of the ground floor commercial space. And if we do end up raising the heights, the, the plan is recommending some kind of remediate remediative actions to kind of lessen impacts if and when those rezoned areas are in proximity to residential zone. So this diagram on the right kind of shows an example of how you can treat a taller building by basically the, the line of sight that, that somebody's eyes would realize if you step the building back. So if you do step it back, it's not that looming presence where it's kind of dominating your house and taking over the streetscape. Some examples that we looked at, obviously there, it's, you know, the bigger municipalities have more examples of this, but if this is occurring in areas in Rhode Island and Maine and different areas. So this is kind of the concept where you have that high bay round floor and then you have like two to three stories up above that support that ground floor use. And as part of that, to kind of test it, to see if this is something that's viable, the consultant went through a series of exercises to look at fit tests and how that would play out. So, you know, they, they, they take a parcel. They factor in, you know, here's your ground floor. This is kind of a two-story building and the example below is a larger site with a four-story building. And obviously these uses require a lot of parking as well. So it kind of lays out per the parking code, you're going to need X number of spaces. You're also going to need, you know, bays for the trucks to congregate and get in and out. And then we took things a little more to a higher depth where we looked at some actual parcels, you know, we didn't specific uses, but we looked at actual parcels and tried to look at not only the feasibility from that kind of block diagram we just looked at. But also, you know, for these typical industries and if we realize some actual manufacturing growth, the kind of jobs that could be generated by that, the incomes and then how that kind of plays out on, you know, the, the overall impact on the city in terms of taxes and so forth. So here's just kind of a further example of how they put that together. And these are in the appendices of the report at the end, if you didn't get a chance to go through those. Kind of zooming in a little bit on the uses, there's a couple of tables in here that are important. The table on the top, here, here are the the three kind of classifications we have, and then it recommends for this upper one is dealing with contractor yard. So it's recommending how you define the contractor yards, as I kind of mentioned, where you have, like you're somebody that's really kind of a high impact. You know, where the neighbors would not necessarily want this in their own backyard down to where you have something like just a contractor office where it could be just a plumbing contractor or electrical contractor. And we also looked at self-storage because that became a concern throughout the study and the kind of zones where it should be allowed. And the table below kind of, it takes that to the next step where it gets specific to the zones itself. And says whether it's the use is allowed or not, if it is, what kind of permit is required? Is it an over the counter permit, which is a zoning permit? Is it a site plan approval or is it something that, you know, feels it requires a special permit? And in some instances, you cannot do some of these uses in those zones. So that's kind of lays out the kind of path forward when we actually write the zoning for the, the industrial zones. Specific to the boundaries, and this is kind of zooming in on South Norwalk, which kind of has been the legacy area for a lot of these heavy commercial industrial developments. So the map on the left is the existing zoning here. Here's South Main, you can see, if anybody needs me to blow this up, I'm happy to try to make it a little larger.
Please, don't mind.
Sure. Let me make, see if I can do that from a screen share, which I don't know if I can. No, it's not letting me from.
But you're also going to send the material to us, correct, Steve?
Yeah, it is in the material. Yeah, it's in the appendices. But I'll try to do it from a big picture standpoint, just to point out some highlights on this map. So here's the MLK Boulevard through here, South Main through here. The dark purple on the map on the left, this is your heavy industrial uses, which we kind of talked about before, where you have La Joy, some of the big contractor yards. I mean, as you can see, the I one is a fair amount of the South Norwalk industrial zone land is in the I one zone. The map on the right, this kind of, it's kind of, I guess, a darker blue color. This is what is being recommended to the, for the I one zone going forward. So you can see that the I one area is shrunk quite a bit. So it pulls the impacts away from the neighborhoods. We're recommending that a lot of these I one areas go to what's industrial two, which is really trying to encourage more on the manufacturing side. You can still do that in these I one zones and we welcome that, but it's kind of some of the pulling some of these heavier uses away from the residential areas and pulling them into more of a core area. We did expand the I one area around Rockland, Rockland Road. There, it really is no neighborhood impact in that area and the majority of the uses in there are kind of on the heavier side. So we're providing another avenue where these uses can exist. It's important to point out that in this I two area, which is this kind of lighter purple color through here and also to the east of the heavy industrial areas. You can still do like the indoor contractor yards and you can do like the plumbing offices and those kind of things, which can't have that heavy industrial use that's, you know, always seems to be the problematic areas. When we move closer and I have a couple of maps to zoom in on, is the next slide, yeah. To highlight a little bit, again, here's Lexington Ave through here. You can see this pink area is neighborhood business. If you go down here, the majority of these properties, especially on this side are all residential now. So we're proposing to actually rezone those to residential. So they line up with the uses that are there now. And then a area that's been very problematic since I've been here is kind of this kind of by merit place, Olean Street. Even on part of merit where there's a lot of, you need, from one property to the next, you have like a you have a small contractor yard next to a house, next to a commercial business. So we're trying to right-size where those uses should be and hopefully over time those contractor yards, and I'm speaking solely of ones that are there legally, kind of revert to something that's more more benign and less impactful on the neighborhoods and something that's, you know, seen as a betterment versus something that's a kind of a detraction to the area. So we're trying to right-size these and areas where that makes sense. Not eliminating these heavy industrial uses because we recognize they're an important part of the city and the business environment, but we understand that there are a lot of concerns and there's been a lot of problems over time. So we're just trying to come up with the right formula to address that. Not much of a change in the East Norwalk area, just to point out that the spine area along the railroad tracks is heavy industrial now, the industrial one. We're proposing to put that into the industrial two category. One thing I did want to flag on this map. These parcels in this kind of, I guess, kind of grayish color here, those are some of the parcels we're looking at as part of the waterfront study. Similar to the East Norwalk TOD plan, we are recommending that the DPW garage, if there is a place we can relocate it, that we do relocate it and that we repurpose this property for something that's more beneficial to the residents of the city, hopefully gaining them some waterfront access.
Steve, Steve, while you're on the East Norwalk, if I may. Why is the Cove area, it's got obviously a marina? And it's got oyster farms, etc., oyster, where the oyster boats harbor in a case. Why hasn't that got some involvement in the waterfront study?
For a couple of reasons, because right now the air, it's zoned neighborhood business. The area, if you recall from the TOD study, we kind of said that area really works pretty well. So we don't want to do anything to mess it up. We want to kind of leave it alone. If anything, help protect it. But we do understand in, in the waterfront study, it's flagged as an area of influence. So we understand that whatever we do over here could actually affect operations over here because the businesses that operate here are also working with all these businesses that are operating in this area over here. So we understand there's impacts. But we don't want to do anything to interfere with what those are. We actually were out there last week, a couple of members of staff and myself, we're actually over cops, cops.
Island, yeah.
Thank you. We were down there, we met with them for a couple of hours, just learning about their business and talking to them about the waterfront and the study. So, yeah, we were well aware of the the kind of urgency over in that area.
Thank you.
Yep. And moving kind of northward up off of main Ave and Perry Ave area. There are a lot of small legacy kind of manufacturing areas and contractor yards in this area. So we think this is a potential area for business development in the future as well as the smaller area down here. So we're actually proposing to upzone this from the business two to the new industrial two designation. So that's something that we're recommending as well. Last area to flag, and it's pretty minor overall, when the West Ave Wall Street plan was redone in, in the zoning redone in 2019, there were several areas, areas, excuse me, of industrial zone land in and around Wall Street that we left alone with the understanding that we were going to look at the, this more closely as part of the study. So, you know, we've, we've kind of gone through that exercise now and it's just recommending that these parcels, a couple here. There's a couple of purple parcels as well as a couple neighborhood business parcels that those get wrapped into the central business district. And I think that will make for a more cohesive redevelopment if and when that occurs in the future. So kind of in summary, and I don't have the numbers yet, we're actually analyzing it right now, the kind of change in the amount of industrials and industrial zone land existing zoning versus the proposed zoning. So we'll kind of have those numbers for everybody in the next week. The idea is to move these kind of noxious uses away from the residential areas whenever we can. And add hopefully uses that are job generating and more beneficial to the city. And we're doing that by allowing that additional height in certain circumstances and also looking at reduction reductions in the parking standards for these uses. Classifying the type of contractors, kind of understanding that not all contractors are the same in, in defining where they can go. We're looking at the waterfront more closely now. The DPW garage I mentioned, and also we understand that Norton is kind of its own unique animal and needs its own own special treatment, I think, if we can ever improve access to that site from ninety-five, I think that would make life a lot easier for everyone involved. And also looking at different regulatory measures to lessen the impacts on the neighborhood. So kind of the next steps, as I mentioned, I did planning committee last week. I'm with you tonight. Next week I will be with zoning. We were taking couple of public comments through, through November. And we'll be hopefully between now and that point, having some more specific meetings with a few of the neighborhoods to just to say, here, here is what we're recommending and why and take their feedback. And then from that point, staff will kind of work on codifying these changes and then at some point in time, they'll come back to the commission level for approval, which we hope gets wrapped up sometime by you know, March or April of twenty twenty-two. That's it. I'm happy to pull the screen back up if you need to look at any slides.
Want to have any questions? So Mike, we stop?
Yeah, hi, Steve. I'm curious, do you remember the height of either two thirty East Avenue or the building on Van Zant? I forget the address. The one that's applying for. I'm sorry.
Twenty-five bands, and you're thinking of.
Yes, twenty-five bands. And do we know those heights off the top of our head? And if not, we can look it up. I'm just curious where the new height falls in regards to those two, two buildings because they're so easy for people to relate to.
Yeah, that's a good question. I'll, I'll confirm it for you tomorrow. I don't have the plans to, to, you know, get easy access to, but I'm thinking close to sixty feet for two thirty East Ave. Twenty-five veins in, I don't know. It's probably at least fifty feet. I'm not positive, but I can see if we have that anywhere within their application that they submitted. They really didn't propose any changes to that part of the exterior. So I'm not sure if I've got that documented. I can always reach out to them and ask them directly if they know the answer to that.
Great. Yeah, I think just have a frame of reference to where that you know, sets it's easy to imagine. Thanks.
Yep.
Steve, has you approached any of the existing businesses that will be affected by this, especially the larger businesses? Because you're saying that they're basically, you ought to be frozen in time, which means that they will not be able to expand beyond where their business is now. Have you gotten any comments from them?
No, not directly. That's like kind of our, what we have to do now is as part of the kind of public input process at the beginning, we did speak with a lot of the contractors and reached out to them, you know, letting them know about the plan and conducted interviews with them. So we just need to circle back and say, here, here's what we've here's what we're recommending and why and then get their input. We've, we've done that for just a couple of them that are aware of it, that we've been talking to about a few other things, but the whole group of them, not, not in the whole.
So is this plan still flexible in the sense that when you do speak with these larger, heavy industrial businesses? That you're, this is flexible in order to accommodate their needs?
It, it could be, it just depends on what the extent of it would be if it, I mean, the, the boundaries that are in the maps that outline the new zoning, I mean, that, those are just lines on the map. So if we, there was a need to move those one direction or another, that that could occur. I, I'm hoping too that some of these businesses will see that they're also, the regulate, regulation changes could also benefit them as a property owner in the future if they wanted to ever sell those properties and do something else with the properties that maybe the additional the additional height allowed and the reduction in parking might also help them make the property more marketable.
Just going back, Steve, on Mike's question, two thirty East Avenue is five stories. With the top story in some cases laid back from the road, road view. So now what that chart goes out to, I think is about sixty-five feet. I'm not quite sure. That's what you can confirm.
Yeah, we, I can, I know where the plans are in my office. I just don't, not in my office. Sorry. I can check that easy enough tomorrow.
Steve Kleppen. I think that UTIL has made some good adjustments to this report with the addition of a couple of these appendices. I'm starting to feel like a broken record. They did add some business names and then the chart in the back listed. I guess what are all the businesses in Norwalk by size? And I still feel that this report could be so much more user friendly to the public when they're going to make comments on it to know, going back to that lovely bubble chart, how many or who are those businesses in Norwalk? Because you know, we talk about breweries and bakeries, like that's all we're going to have here, you know, people that are going to be drinking beer and eating pastries. It seems for these artisan things and stuff, and I'm getting, that term is kind of getting old on me. And I think there must be other businesses that are these lighter industrial or artisan type businesses. And I really believe that if we want to get more public feedback on this, we need to kind of put some names on these labels and it, well, I just think it will make this report. more user friendly and more real to people to know, oh, so that's what that is, because most people don't know what LaJoy's is, other than, you know, a wrecking yard or whatever you want to call it. And so if I can ask UTIL and you to make this more user friendly, and if I'm not explaining myself, you know, let me know.
Yeah, I I we get your point. I I'm, we were, we've been exchanging emails with UTIL just to try to address that issue. And I don't know if we've got a firm answer on how to do that yet, but I think, as I mentioned, I think maybe we'll we'll invite you on a call in not so distant future to, once we put our heads together a little bit more and then see if that's in line with what you're kind of thinking about.
Okay. I don't know if any of the other commissioners have had the opportunity to kind of look at it from that point of view, but I'd love your feedback as well.
Steve, one thought is some of the Google pictures that you can have showing obviously contractors' yards right next to residential buildings, etc., which sort of highlight some of the issues we're trying, you are trying to address in the industrial zoning. Bring it down to fact, I understand the problem with highlighting one contractor's yard is then identified and people become pilloried or something. There's a sensitivity there.
Yeah. And then also, I mean, there were some, and that it was not based solely on proximity to neighbors, because, for example, on Bowton Street, there are some larger contractor yards that actually operate their businesses, you know, respectfully of the of the neighbors, but like, you know, like the consultant was out there and they said Bowton Street is just way too narrow to have these heavy trucks going up and down there. So they that was another concern. That that's a big problem in a lot of South Norwalk, where these legacy contractor yards are, is they're on these little, you know, if you, if you ever go down Olean and Consooth and some of those streets, they're just narrow little streets, and they just aren't conducive to that kind of traffic, so that it's trying to you know, like find, find a keep, keep a place for them to operate and make it, you know, we don't, we're not trying to drive any business out, we're just trying to figure out where where everybody can coexist without causing conflict.
Have a question. Uh, Steve, can you can you all hear me? Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, good. Can you address a theoretical small contractor, plumber, electrician, HVAC, roofer, painter, you know, all the things that we rely on? Just and if you can summarize, does this plan expand their potential places to have a business? Or is this it, can you answer that? I mean, does it expand those uses or those potential sites for those businesses to open? Because a lot of them, as we know, and I think it's been part of the, you know, public record and public knowledge, operate, you know, in at home or park on streets in residential neighborhoods, do whatever they need to do to survive, uh, but not have, you know, they it's always because of the price of real estate in Fairfield County and in Norwalk, been very difficult for many of them to, you know, purchase a property to locate. How how does this plan address the retention and attraction of those businesses? It's basically what I'm trying to ask.
Sure, for for the smaller, like, for that, you know, we used a plumber, for example, for the plumbing contractor. I think there's, I don't have the number, so I don't want to, you know, go too far, but if you look at, if you can see the screen right now, that this area, the, you know, along the MLK corridor is zone restricted industrial. And I don't think the zone ever quite functioned the way it was established. So it just never quite worked, I don't think. So we've loosened up the restrictions on that area and allowing those kind of plumbing contractors to now operate in this entire corridor where they couldn't operate there before. I mean, one thing I think would be a great benefit, and I'm hoping that some of these changes to the zoning ground floor height will do. Well, I don't think we have a lot of areas where you have like like a contractor kind of industrial park sort of thing, where like one guy has like a, puts up a building with six different, you know, bays where somebody could lease a bay from him or rent a bay from him and then run his business out of there. We don't seem to have a lot of that, like a park like that. And I think that'd be one nice thing that I think could come out of this if 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 somebody, and I don't know what the finances are about the return on the developer end to do that, but I think that would be something that would give some of these contractors a place to have a space where they didn't have to worry about, am I running afoul of zoning? And I can, you know, operate my business and store my equipment here, and it's safe and it's kind of secure. And there's other businesses that are similar to me in that area. I'm hoping something like that can pop up, especially along MLK.
Uh, thank you. And I have one other question, unless somebody else wants to jump in right now. So the area up on Perry, off Perry Avenue, I think that was identified. Is it Broad or Perry? I always get those two confused.
Come on, Gold Street, come on, gold and silver over there, Mike?
Yeah, yes, yeah, those, that that area. Uh, that's also the Aquafor Protection Area, I believe. I may be wrong, but I kind of recall, you know, additional restrictions as to what you can do there because of the Aquafor Protection Law. And I believe the zoning commission acts as the Aquafor Protection Agency, if I'm recalling that correctly. So, uh, they so.
Did you have a question? Do you have a question about it?
Yes, I, I'm curious if they looked at the, you know, as as part of this process, looked at those restrictions, because if you're going to be adding uses, are those going to be made moot by the Aquafor Protection Law?
I I don't think so, just based on, you know, I I've sat on enough of the the Aquafor Protection Agency meetings to see some of the applicants that come through there, and a lot of them do have trucks. And then those are inspected at least once a year, maybe twice a year, just to make sure that, you know, if if they're approved, that they have, you know, the the separators installed and everything that's could be an issue is not an issue. But I I think your points are fair, but I'll, I'll double check with Alexis in conservation, see if she has any concerns or thoughts. But I I think we're trying to not encourage something that's going to be a messy use in those areas, but something that would be a bit more beneficial use.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think this is a step in the right direction. I know when Steve first came aboard, we're talking about the MLK corridor. Work on putting something together. Hopefully, this won't be a major headache, Steve Kleppen, and this undertaking, we hope this could be a progressive transition for proper users. I was just looking at, as you were talking about the industrial zones, I was looking at Fish Street, and I know a couple of contractors there next to, between Rick and Phil's Roofing. Some HVAC companies, they use these higher bay spaces they could put their trucks in, and there's issues with parking vehicles inside and outside the building and turning around, and hopefully this would enable it would ease the burden of identifying more opportunities away from residential areas where people could with their own financing or assistance and finance and get a space that could be properly used for that area. So hopefully the zoning commission will give you some good pointers and tips, and I'm looking forward to seeing this move in a direction where we can see the benefit today rather than five years from now. So we could talk about, you know, these these changes to help the the residents to keep businesses in town. I think that's important. You know, people are getting service industry focused businesses outside of Norwalk. And, you know, I know Mike's a supporter of that, that we can get more businesses in the area that they can service our needs. And have opportunities for the young ones to find trades in the service industry that could, you know, help us grow internally. So I'm looking forward to these items, these issues, these positive issues, and thanks for the time going over this industrial zone. Hopefully, our consultants will still work with us on this, Steve. Hopefully, it's not just a one and done thing. Hope this is the working document that, you know, we can there's will be changes that need to be made in amendments. I hope this will be something I I saw Lexington Avenue, it was always a concern of mine because there's four zones on that one street. So being able to flush it out to one to two zones, I think it's a step in the right direction. Does anyone have any questions? Should we go back to our our, the next item? Is that okay? Or you guys want to still go over this industrial zone study?
I'm, I have no more questions, but Steve, before you got here, we thought I'm, I'm going to make a suggestion to you as the chair. The to just delay the approval of minutes until everyone's present, because, you know, that we can't get their feedback right now.
That would be the perfect recommendation. I would have thought of that myself. Doing that. Let's move the the minutes to the next meeting. Comments from the director?
No, I don't have anything further. I'm trying to think if there's anything, because I told you about the waterfront study is kind of just kicking off now. So that's kind of the only other big aspect at the moment.
Comments from the commissioners?
Well, let's make a movement to adjourn. Who would like to do that? No one? Want to stay on the phone?
Tammy raised her hand.
Tammy, all right, who want to second that motion?
Seconded.
All right, great. Thank you all for your patience, and I have a really nice evening to all, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.
Night.